Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 6:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube. Call to order, Pledge of Allegiance, followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Okay, it looks like we have a proclamation today. Mr. Bailey. Okay, City of Leavenworth Kansas proclamation. Whereas our parks and recreation are vitality important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. They build active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreational services for those who are mentally or physically disabled. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and natural recreational areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the City of Leavenworth recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, I Kamla M. Leonhard, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2022 as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Leavenworth. And I call upon all citizens and civic organizations of Leavenworth to observe this month as sanctioned by the U.S. Congress with appropriate ceremonies and activities. So, there you go, Mr. Bailey.
All right, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. You want to have a talk?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Just want to remind everybody to come out and enjoy our parks and sign up for our recreation programs. Right now, the pool is in full swing, and come visit us at the pool. So, you guys have any questions for me?
No. Great.
I just want to say you all did an excellent job selecting the lifeguards. They're amazing.
Thank you, yes, yes. They've done very well this year.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next up, consideration of previous meeting minutes. Minutes from July, from July, minutes from June 28th, 2022 regular meeting. Do I have any questions or concerns from fellow commissioners? Okay, just need a motion, please.
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passed. New business, public comment, i.e. items not listed on the agenda or receipt of petitions. Public comment is limited to two to three minutes, and no action will be taken by the commission on public comment items. Please state your name and address. A sign-up sheet will be provided in the commission chambers for anyone wishing to speak. Do we have anyone here for public comment? No? Okay, we'll carry on. General items, 2022 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant application.
Chief Pat Kitchens.
Madam Mayor and Commission, the police departments before the governing body this evening asking for your authority to apply for the 2022 Edward Byrne Memorial JAG Grant in the amount of $31,425. On June 25th, the Justice Department notified the City of Leavenworth that we were eligible for the $31,425 allocation. It's an annual grant that is made available to local law enforcement for support in cost of acquiring equipment. Typically, we've used these funds to purchase police equipment for the many years that we've got it. The grant application requires us to share the allocation with Leavenworth County Sheriff's Department, which we've done for many years. The formula is essentially 60% to the City of Leavenworth and 40% to Leavenworth County, and that's how those numbers. So, the City of Leavenworth would receive $18,425, and the Leavenworth County Sheriff's Department would receive $13,000. But we are required to apply for the grant on behalf of both agencies. There is no impact to the City of Leavenworth's budget. This is a direct allocation to our agency. Requires a couple of things. Authorize the police department to apply for the 2022 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $31,425, of which $13,000 would be given to the Leavenworth County Sheriff's Office. The action requires the city manager and city attorney to sign an inter-local agreement with Leavenworth County. Further, it requires the mayor to sign an additional document entitled Certifications and Assurances by the chief executive of the applicant government. So, I'd be asking you to authorize all of that. If you have any questions.
Yeah, Chief Kitchens, so this amount, $31,425, does that fluctuate year to year?
Yes, ma'am. It stays around the $30,000 mark, but it kind of goes up or down a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. ...title certifications and assurances by...
Any other questions?
No questions.
Can you give us an idea of what you're going to buy with it?
Yes, sir. We are going to buy replacement computers that are in police cars. This amount of money will allow us to buy about three and a half. When we buy new replacement police cars, we buy new equipment to go in it. So, we will use that to offset the cost. Use this money in lieu of city money.
Good.
Okay, then if no further questions, I just need a motion.
I move that we approve the police department applying for the 2022 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant in the amount of $31,425.
Second.
Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, resolutions. Resolution B-2315, resolution providing for a notice of public hearing exceeding revenue-neutral rate.
Madam Mayor and Commission, the 2023 proposed operating budget intends to exceed the revenue-neutral rate as is required by KSA 79-288. The city must hold a public hearing related to this issue. All we're doing tonight is considering the resolution to set that public hearing date. That public hearing would be set for August 23rd, 2022, which is a regular city commission meeting for consideration of exceeding the revenue-neutral rate. So, all we're doing tonight is setting the public hearing date for that item.
Okay. Okay, any questions from fellow commissioners? Do you have any questions, Commissioner Martin?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, then I just need a motion, please.
I move approval of Resolution B-2315, providing notice of public hearing for exceeding the revenue-neutral rate.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you very much, okay. Bids, contracts, and agreements. Consider 2022 Police Radio Encryption.
Once again, Police Chief Pat Kitchens will handle this item.
Madam Mayor and Commission, the police department is before the governing body this evening requesting authority to purchase software and equipment to provide encryption to our radio communications equipment. The Leavenworth Police Department participates in the Mid-American, I'm sorry, the Metropolitan Area Regional Radio System, which is overseen by the, which is the acronym for MARS, and it's overseen by a MARS council. The council has representation from the Kansas City Metropolitan Area, from both Kansas and Missouri. Encryption of police equipment would simply mean that the general public would not be able to listen to police communications that happen. You might be familiar with folks that like to listen to the police scanner, okay? There have been ongoing discussions by MARS for a while since about 2018 about encryption, but we've never had an interpretation that that was going to be a requirement to do that. That's changed over the course of the last couple of years. Essentially, what we believe has happened, if there have been some fairly significant civil unrest incidents across the country, and there have been some specific to the Kansas City area. What they determined and discovered during the review of those circumstances were that participants of the civil unrest were listening to police communications with the scanner and making decisions about how to move and affect, and in essence, keeping the civil disturbance going on for longer, making it difficult for public safety to get those incidents under control a little safer. So, the MARS council essentially changed its strategy and said that they're going to require encryption for users of the radio system. I'll be clear, I'm not thrilled by that. It wasn't my intention to do that. If they said it was an option, there is a very small, but very devoted group of people in the City of Leavenworth that enjoy very much listening to the police scanner.
Right.
They can hear various calls about why the police are doing this, or the fire department's doing this. And so, you're going to get a call or two about that, I would imagine. This is being imposed upon us, but there's a valid legitimate reason to do that, and we're a participating member of that, and so they are requiring to use the system to encrypt. You've seen in there that, in the council minutes and as well as the letters and the language that we got, that that date has changed a little bit. It was originally supposed to be the first of the year. People were scrambling around a little bit. I don't think every agency was quite ready to do that, so here we are. We're a little bit fortunate in that, I think some of you were on the dais in September when I was here, and we bought some handheld radios. Those radios, some of those, we purchased the equipment already as part of that purchase of the handheld radios, because some of the stuff that we have, like the SWAT team and the narcotics unit, for obvious reasons, that equipment is already encrypted. We wouldn't want a target of a drug raid to know that we were coming and put everybody in danger. So, we have a little bit of fortune in that, we've done that. So, this purchase would provide software and equipment for the additional handheld radios that we have and all of the radios in the police cars and the fleet that we operate, okay? So, I would ask you to authorize the police department to purchase the software and equipment from Motorola Solutions in the amount of $42,876.64 to allow us for encryption of police communications, both in the mobile and portable radios that we have. It will also be necessary at some point in the future to encrypt the consoles at the 911 center. That is going to be about $3,000 is the sort of estimate that we have. We would be allowed to spend 911 money on that, and we would do that when it was appropriate. So, that would be what I would be asking you to approve tonight, and I'll answer whatever questions that you might have.
So, Chief Kitchens, that radio encryption, is that, I guess, just across the board what people, I mean, what police departments?
Almost all of the police departments that are participating in it, the public safety police specifically, in the Kansas City Metropolitan Area, will be operating on encrypted equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Do you see law enforcement doing this all across the world?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, again, there will be some adverse impact on people that enjoy doing that, and we certainly understand that, but...
I know, that's how my dad kept tracking me in high school.
Yeah.
No, yeah, it goes way back here, yeah, yeah.
Way back. Don't have to go that far.
Well, well...
But...
My great appearance.
The most important thing, critical to public safety, is the ability to communicate. We have to be able to communicate with our colleagues at the sheriff's department and the highway patrol. And so, obviously, we need to join and be a part of that and participate in this, even though there'll be a little bit of adverse impact to the local folks who love doing that.
Right, right. But you really don't have any choice, so...
No, ma'am.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Our worthy attorney. Do you see any problem with that, with a move like this on the part of the city? And I'm sure if so for the part of the city, the rest of the people that are involved in MARS in the way of transparency, public record, you know, people saying, hey, you know, you're hiding stuff from us.
No, I mean, this isn't something that'd be open to the Open Records Act. Does that be a record of some kind that's maintained by the city? So, this kind of, as you go now, to the extent that there are transcripts or things like that, those could be subject to the Open Records Act. It depends on, we have a number of exceptions as to security and security systems and police methods and things like that. But this in and of itself wouldn't violate any of those that I see.
Can I add a little bit to that? So, we record all of the communications that, and we keep that for the appropriate amount of time, depending on what it is. The only impact here would be that as a general matter, the public wouldn't be able to listen to it. But if there were some issue where we needed to provide the transcripts, as Mr. Waters described, we would be able to produce that. It's simply an operational decision at the time that would impact public safety.
Sure, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chief Kitchens, excuse me, real quick, can you tell me, you may have mentioned it, maybe I just didn't hear it very well. So, right now, we're using MARS to operate the communication system. And how is it that they actually come into play right now with what we do here in Leavenworth?
So, if I understood the question, what are we doing now versus what would happen if we make the change? Is that right?
Well, actually, I'm curious more of, okay, so we're part of MARS today. Because we're part of that, you know, that system, I guess, what advantage do we have? Is it something that we have to be a part of? Can you explain that a little bit more?
I guess the right answer to that is yes, we need to be a part of that. The most important part of public safety is communications and interoperability. Almost all of the participating law enforcement agencies, fire departments, EMS, all participate in the Kansas City Metropolitan Area with this system. So, the benefit is that if, in fact, some significant event took place, we would be able to communicate and coordinate much more effectively. So, the answer to that question is yes, we do need to participate in that, because that's the overriding impact, is our ability to communicate with everybody, no matter what happens.
Okay, okay. And so, again, to make sure I understand, this is an actual mandate that's come down now, is that right?
That's correct. It doesn't say it, but our interpretation is that that's coming, that if you're not willing to participate in the encryption, you might not have access to the system, and that would be significantly detrimental to us, and so we need to do this.
Gotcha, okay. Because I definitely, you know, my thoughts are definitely in the, you know, the world of, you know, transparency and another measure that we have today to just, you know, trying to stay accountable to the publicly serve and everything. And I just, I hate that idea of having something that's encrypted, totally get, you know, why you'd want to do it and totally see the benefit of it. I just hate the fact that that's one more, one more layer that the general public loses the ability to, you know, be able, you know, to listen to and understand what's going on. So, yeah, I definitely don't like it, so those are my two cents, everybody.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I just need a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to authorize the police department to purchase the software and equipment from Motorola Solutions in the amount of $42,876.64 for encryption of police communication of mobile and portable radios.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Uh, no.
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion passed, okay. Thank you, Chief Kitchens. Okay, next up, consider approval of bid for Second and Chestnut Stone Arch Replacement Project.
The next two items will be handled by our Public Works Director, Brian Faust.
Hey, thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. The item this evening is to consider the bids received and possible award of the Second and Chestnut Stone Arch Replacement Project. On February 12th of 2020, the city commission approved a contract with Wilson and Company for the design of the project. The location of the project is in the Clark and Reese addition to the City of Leavenworth that was planted in January of 1857. The original stone arches were likely installed shortly after this, making this some of the oldest infrastructure in the city. I definitely think we got our money's worth.
Put it mildly.
I know.
As can be seen on the picture here, the project is necessary due to multiple failures in the old system that has created sinkholes. If you've been out in the area, you'll probably see a lot of orange fencing
Yeah.
in several spots. These failures continue to worsen with each storm event. This one is starting to head back towards a small apartment complex. The item we do need to address. And part of the reason for the cost of the project is this is an area towards the bottom of a drainage basin. You see the Missouri River on the right side of the screen. See if you can see my cursor. This is Second and Chestnut right here, and so that's basically where the project starts, and it goes up just through Third Street, partway to Fourth. And so, we have a tremendous amount of water coming through this entire basin. And so, the pipe sizing and the structures in this area need to be fairly large to handle that amount of water. This picture actually shows the project limits. The project does include upsizing and replacing the stormwater conveyance system from Second and Chestnut to the alley northeast of Fort and Spruce. With the extreme amount of excavation along the project, there is a substantial amount of street work along a sanitary sewer and manhole replacement that needs to be done with the project. The blue line on the drawing is actually associated with all the stormwater work that's being done. You'll see a green line, it's hard to see, but along Chestnut, that's actually a sanitary sewer replacement. And then the areas that are a little bit darker as far as the road, a little bit of Chestnut, there's an alley, part of Third Street, part of Olive Street, and part of Spruce. Those are all being completely reconstructed because of so much material that we're taking out as part of the project. The project plans were prepared with Wil, excuse me, by Wilson and Company, and the project was advertised for bid in both Leavenworth Times and Drexel Technologies. There was a mandatory pre-bid meeting held on June 15th, and bids were opened last week on July 6th. Lexico was the low bidder and met all bidding requirements. Greg is here this evening to answer any questions that you may have. Lexico has done a number of projects in Leavenworth and has experienced a satisfactory performance of work. Inspection of the project will be by city staff. As far as budget impact, the initial estimate for the project back in February 2021 was 2.3 million. Since that estimate was created, there have been significant cost increases across the board. Over the past several months, the city and Wilson have worked to streamline the design, to reduce costs where possible. Even with that effort, the project costs have increased roughly 53% over the last year and a half. Currently, there is funding available to complete the project. Back in 2020, the city did issue 1.9 million in general obligation bonds for this project, and stormwater impact fee funds are available to cover that difference. Tonight, the staff does recommend that the city commission award the Second and Chestnut Stone Arch Replacement Project to Lexico in the amount of $3,534,012.80. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I have a question. I don't know if, Brian, you can answer it, or Mr. Cost. How long does a project like this take?
Well, right now, some of the problems been is actually getting some material, ordering the pipe as well as the structures, this long lead time. What we heard today was the lead time has actually come down, I think to four to six weeks after... Shop drawings have been approved. We do have a timeframe that we have to get some work done on Second Street because of a gas line through there, that we need to get that done before October 1st. I think the project will proceed as they can through the fall and winter, but then a lot of the street reconstruction will probably occur in the spring of 2023.
What they're telling us, the first item, is the large pipe starting at the Missouri River, and then we'll work upstream, so we need to get through Second Street. They've told us to expect pipe first of September. If we give them a purchase order immediately, the purchase order is sitting on the desk, ready to hit the send button, depending on your action tonight.
Oh, I got you. Yeah.
Structures, they're saying, they're telling us four weeks after shop drawings. They say that, we'll see if they make it or not. But we may end up doing a little bit of work underneath Second Street to get underneath the gas line due to that restriction, that it cannot be shut off between, I believe it's October 1st and April 1st. Try to get that in place, and then if we have to wait a week or two on structures or something, we may have to. But our intention would be to work this project through the winter months as much as we can. Obviously, if it gets down to zero and things like that, once it gets down below about 20 degrees or so, it starts getting tough. But we'd like to try to do as much this winter as we can and then probably finish it up. I'm guessing it's going to be in the middle of next year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cost. Did you have any questions? Commissioner Martin, did you have a question?
No, ma'am.
Just a comment.
Okay.
I noticed you didn't put where Lexico is located. I know where you are. But, but I am glad they're in Leavenworth.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Local, local, keep the money here.
We appreciate that.
Been around a while.
Quick note, we'll communicate with the property owners out there. Most of them have been waiting on this for quite a while.
I know.
We'll get out there to them and let them know. It is really, the scope is hard to justify on this picture with all the road work and the storm work and the sanitary work.
Well, that one area is just getting worse.
Yeah, so we'll do our best to communicate all the work out there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I just need a motion.
I move the city commission award Second and Chestnut Stone Arch Replacement Project to Lexico for an amount not to exceed $3,534,012.80.
Second.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passed, thank you. Okay, next up, consider approval of bid for 2022 Pavement Management Project Mill and Overlay Program.
The item this evening is to consider the bids received and possible award of the 2022 Mill and Overlay Component of this year's pavement management program. The components of the 2022 program include the Mill and Overlay, parking lot upgrades at the library, micro-surfacing, and major repairs and maintenance work that's beyond the scope of our street division. The funding for 2022 covers project design, construction of the various components, a detailed evaluation of pavement condition that was previously done in 2016 and 2019, along with the next phase of the comprehensive pavement management program. Inspection of all this work will be done by city staff. The Mill and Overlay Program for 2020 includes, it's up on your screen right now, violas between 10th and 15th, Seventh Street between Metropolitan and Dakota, adjacent to the new developments, which includes 711 and the main gate to the fort, Fifth Street between Shawnee and Oak, so basically just south of City Hall, down to the bridge, several smaller street segments, Garland south of Reese, and Johnson Street, which is on the south side of the Lawson Early Education Center. We did Pawnee on the north side last year, this year we'll do on the south side. In addition, the project does include repairs to the library parking lot. There were several alternate bid items within we did this. Cherokee between Broadway and Fourth, Delaware between Sixth and Esplanade, and Second Street between Choctaw and Seneca. Project plans were prepared by Alfred, Benish, and Company, and the project was advertised for bid in both Leavenworth Times and in Drexel Technology. A pre-bid meeting was held on June 16th, and bids were opened on June 30th. J.M. Fahey was the low bidder, and they have met all bidding requirements. Fahey has completed the Mill and Overlay Program for the city in previous years, including last year, and the work was completed within the required timeframe and within specifications. So, we're confident they have the experience to do their work here in Leavenworth. Work is expected to begin in late summer and will be completed by November. As far as the budget, the 2022 budget included $2 million for the pavement management program. In addition, there was unused funding in 2021 that brings the total available to 2.5 million. Probably provide a kind of a summary of where all the costs are. The base bid for Mill and Overlay was 832,682.52. The base bid for Mill and Overlay is two, excuse me, $832,682.50. We'd like to select Cherokee as one of the alternates that we would do, an additional $211,000. We showed the micro-surfacing, which was awarded on June 14th, for $777,000. The bids did come in better than we had hoped, and so we'd like to also at this time do the three alternate streets that were shown with the micro-surfacing.
Okay.
This also includes Cody and the service center parking lots, the 2022 pavement evaluation, as well as the next phase of the comprehensive pavement plan for 2023 and beyond. Total cost with all these components is roughly 2.3 million. The Mill and Overlay Project, and the reason we wanted to stand at 2.5, part of that was the Mill and Overlay Project was bid with asphalt oil price adjustments. What this means is the actual cost of the project will vary slightly depending on changes to the oil price. So if the price of oil drops, actually the price of the project will go down. If the price of the oil increases, then there will be an increase in cost of the project. With the uncertainty in the market, bidding with an asphalt oil price adjustment helps protect both the city as well as the contractor. If we didn't do this with the uncertainty in the market, a contractor's going to be able to hide, just to protect themselves, and so we're going to get a high bid that way.
Right.
So staff does recommend the City Commission award the 2022 Pavement Management Mill and Overlay Program to J.M. Fahey for the base amount of $832,682.50, and authorize the Public Works Director to add Cherokee Street between Broadway and Fourth for an additional $211,785.30, as funding permits with the approval of the city manager. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone? Fellow commissioners have any questions?
I'm excited.
I, I too, on all of them, especially Viola's. Commissioner Martin?
No ma'am, no questions.
Okay, then I just need a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that the City Commission award the 2022 Pavement Management Mill and Overlay Program to J.M.
Fahey.
Fahey. For the base bid amount of $832,682.50, and authorize the Public Works Director to add Cherokee Street between Broadway and Fourth Street for $211,785.30, as funding permits with the approval of the city manager.
Second.
Second.
Oh, he's second. He's second, okay.
I should wait.
Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Motion passed. Okay, so...
Are you good, Bruce?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Aye, aye aye.
Okay, we're ready for the consent agenda.
All right, Madam Mayor, I move to approve the claim for June 25th, 2022 through July 8th, 2022, in the amount of $1,330,901.58, net amount for payroll number 13, effective July 1st, 2022, in the amount of $370,913.82, no police and fire pension.
So, second.
Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Batter.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passed. Okay, that ends the session of our regular meeting. Mr. Kramer, did you have any additional?
Yeah, just two quick notes. The first one is, if you remember, at the December 14th City Commission meeting, the Commission passed a resolution essentially allowing the city to join an opioid settlement lawsuit through the Attorney General's office, and so I just thought I'd notify the Commission that late last week, we received our first portion of that, so it was a, an amount of $8,830.67, came with about 20 pages of how you're allowed to spend that and how you have to, how you have to budget it and the reporting requirements, but I did want to let you know that we had started receiving funds from that, so I'll meet with the Police Chief, City Prosecutor, Finance Director, and then we'll come up with some, some ideas and, and have that discussion with the Commission, but that, that did bear fruit here about seven months after we passed in the resolutions.
Nice.
And then finally, I did speak with, went down and visited a local business earlier this week, and they, they had signed up for Camp Leavenworth as a local vendor, so that's the, that $25 for local vendors.
Yes.
And so, and I know, I may be speaking a little bit out of turn on the Camp Leavenworth stuff, but we have a postcard that's getting ready to go out to continue that, but I know that local vendors are finding that and signing up, so we're happy about that, so.
Good.
Just wanted to report that.
That's nice, yeah.
Good to hear. That's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Martin, did you have anything?
No, I appreciate that update, Mr. Kramer, uh, wish everybody the best and God bless.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hengel?
Yeah, I just want to encourage citizens to come down to City Hall to, to attend the City Commission meeting and hear firsthand what happens here. We don't get a whole lot of people in the audience, but this is your opportunity to come down and see what goes on right here. Everything we do here affects you very directly, and if there's an issue that you want to communicate to the, to the Commission, you want us to be aware of, the public comment opportunity that you hear at the beginning of each one is a great time to share those issues with the commissioners, the mayor, the city manager, the assistant city manager, as well as all of your fellow citizens of Leavenworth, you know, the, both present and, and those that are watching on Channel 2 and on YouTube, you know, it's, it's a great opportunity to see what goes on, especially bring the, bring the youngsters, I'd say high school age, where they can understand what's going on and see what really happens. That, and I hope you all have a great week.
Okay.
That's a great commercial.
Yeah.
God bless you and have a good one.
Speaking of Channel 2, are we on Channel 2 now? I don't have Channel 2, so I don't know.
Is it working?
I will send you the full update, we had two texts in here yesterday.
Okay.
And so they are, they believe they've isolated it, and we are very close.
Because I get a lot of people saying it's not, I can't see.
Yeah, it's been a spectrum issue, so I'll send it to you and you can share that, but uh, but I believe we're close to resolution.
Good.
Glad to hear that.
Great, great.
Other than that, I don't have anything, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, just comment, fellow commissioners, make sure you get a good night's sleep Thursday night, because Friday, all day, we got budget meetings.
Oh.
All day.
All day, so it's open to the public, so it's right here in the commission chamber, so come sit and listen if you'd like to, but otherwise, everyone have a great week. Need a motion?
No.
Second?
Third.
[laughing]